Well, good evening. I'm Mary Ann Edwards. Welcome to the Temecula City Council meeting, and I am going to call this meeting to order. So, the first thing we're going to do is have our invocation, which is by Rabbi Yonassan Abrams. Nice to see you again so soon. We just met last week, and it was great. And that will be followed by the flag salute, so if you'd stand. Thank you. How you doing?
Fantastic. Thank you for having me again. And I also send greetings and blessings from Rabbi Horowitz. I was just visiting him a couple of weeks ago. The rabbi, probably the first rabbi in Temecula, and he's unfortunately suffering from ALS now. I came to take him over.
Yeah.
So, he sends his blessings to all of you, and his regards.
Well, in return, send him back.
I will tell him next time I see him. Thank you for inviting me for such an important week to share a prayer and a blessing and a message. This week is an important week. It's Thanksgiving in just a couple of days. In six days from today is also Hanukkah. And today, believe it or not, is a special day for Chabad. It's not just a day for Chabad, it's also an important day for the Jewish community, the city of Temecula, and indeed the whole world. Almost 250 years ago, the first Chabad rabbi was imprisoned in Russia for committing the crime of teaching Torah and being Jewish. Today, the 19th of Kislev, the Jewish month of Kislev, just six days before Hanukkah, he was released. In just six days, we'll celebrate Hanukkah, reliving the victory of light over darkness. Until the Messiah comes, there will be haters who won't accept people who think different, or dress different, or look different from them, just as the Greeks in the story of Hanukkah and the Russians in the story of the 19th of Kislev. This has a message for everyone. The way to fight darkness is not with swords and guns, or even with harsh words. The way to fight darkness is with light, the light of truth, the light of purpose, and the light of meaning. The light of purpose is simple, to make the world into a good place. The tools we have to accomplish this are the seven universal commandments, otherwise known as the seven Noah hide commandments. The seven commandments are: number one, to believe in God; number two, not to curse God; number three, not to kill; number four, not to steal; number five, not to commit adultery; number six, to treat animals nicely; and number seven, which City Council represents, is to establish courts of justice to make the world run. The biggest prayer is a positive thought, word, or action. And we end with a prayer, asking of God that in the merit of keeping these seven commandments, the world will indeed become the perfect place, and as the messianic prophecy goes, the wolf will lie with the lamb, alluding to the haters and tough people in the world who will finally come to live in peace with all of their neighbors. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Rabbi. Please place your right hand over your heart. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. And could we have the roll call, please?
Yes, Madam Mayor. Councilmember Alexander?
Here.
Mayor Edwards?
Here.
Councilmember Ron?
Here.
Councilmember Schwenk?
Here.
Councilmember Stewart?
Here.
Thank you. So, we're going to move right into our board and commission reports, and we're going to start with Planning Commission. Mr. Gary Watts, how are you?
Very well, Madam Mayor. How are you tonight? Okay, I'll make this quick. On November 17th, we had our Planning Commission meeting with a grand total of two people in attendance in the audience, which was great. We appreciated that. And we were given the update on the Quality of Life Master Plan for the city. Matt Peters did a great job of presenting that to us. Next slide, please. And we approved, I'll make this short, a new restaurant going in at the corner of Rancho, California, and Yanez, where the Murray Callenders used to be. We're going to have a Longhorn, and I was careful to make sure I pronounced that right, a Longhorn Steakhouse. There are apparently some other steakhouses with similar names, but we don't want to make that mistake. It's the Longhorn Steakhouse. And if I heard correctly, don't quote me on this anywhere, but I think there's only two in California, so this will be the second one. So, we're real pleased with that. It's going to be a little smaller than Murray Callenders, and that was approved on the fine do-ovo. The next slide, I think, is it, right? Next slide, no slide? Okay, I think that was it.
That was it. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
We'll look forward to the Longhorn Steakhouse. I was just by there today, thinking, gee, it's time for somebody to build something on that site. Okay, so, we're going to move on to the Ready Commission, Race Equity Diversity Inclusion, and Chairman Tiffany Baker. How are you?
I'm good. How are you?
Good.
Good evening, everyone. Well, we didn't have our meeting on November 11th because of Veterans Day, so we had a special meeting on the 16th. And in that meeting, we received an update on the Quality Life Master Plan from Matt Peterson as well. And some of our highlights includes the presentation of the plan, yes, but we really had some robust engagement based on our perspective, roles, and backgrounds in the community, and we gave some good recommendations. And one of them really stands out to me most is having pop-ups in Friendship Park, or in all of the parks, and also enhancing our outreach as it relates to having mailers, business list, your business license list, maybe some pop-ups in Primark Mall, and the library. It was just a very robust conversation of how to engage communities, especially some of those that are hard to reach. It was just a wonderful time of using our skill set to really help the city reach their goal of engaging the community. That concludes my report, and happy Thanksgiving from the Ready Commission.
Wonderful, and thank you, and happy Thanksgiving to you. So, we're going to move on to the Public Safety Report with Sheriff's Department Captain Zach Hall. How are you? Oh, no. I'm so sorry.
Yeah, we changed a little bit.
You did. And I had not yet looked to my right, so, welcome.
Hi, I'm Lieutenant Roberts with the Southwest Sheriff's Station. Good evening.
Hi.
So, year-to-date, as of October 31st, in 2021, we've had 70,219 calls for service. In the month of October alone, we've had 7,299. Total violent crimes in 2021 are 401. As you can see, it's a little bit of a difference between 2020 of 397. One homicide, 30 rapes, robberies were 46, aggravated assaults were 323. Total property crimes were 219, oh, I'm sorry, 2,917 year-to-date as of October 31st. Burglaries were 391, a little bit down from 2020. Motor vehicle thefts recovered, 470. Larceny theft, 2,054. And arson cases, we had two. And that concludes the Part One Property Crimes, or Part One Crimes, I'm sorry.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
And thank you very much, and we hope that you and your family have a great Thanksgiving. Kate?
Thank you, you as well.
So, do we have any public comments?
Yes, Madam Mayor. We actually have two emailed public comments, and we do not have any in-person public comments on non-agendized items.
Okay.
Would you like me to read the rules?
I'll go ahead and read the rules, and then you can give the two that you received.
Okay.
A total of 30 minutes is provided for members of the public to address City Council on matters not listed on the agenda. Each speaker is limited to three minutes. Public comments may be made in person at the meeting by submitting a speaker card to the city clerk or deputy city clerk, or by submitting an email to be read aloud into the record at the meeting. Email comments must be submitted to councilcomments@temeculaca.gov. Speaker cards for in-person comments will be called in the order received by the city clerk or deputy city clerk, and then, if time permits, or if time remains, email comments will be read. Email comments on all matters must be received prior to the time the item is called for public comments. All public participation is governed by the Council policy regarding public participation at meetings adopted by Resolution Number 2021-54. Now, we have two.
Yes, Madam Mayor. We have two public comments on non-agendized items. The first one is from Rick Reese. "It's apparent now that most, if not all, of the recent accusations leveled at Temecula Valley High School football players, cheerleaders, and other students are simply untrue and/or unsubstantiated. This specifically concerns the racial allegations against Temecula students late last August. As you know, I haven't been a fan of the Race Equity Diversity and Inclusion Commission, but since you created it despite public opposition, then at a minimum, this commission should develop strategies for the City Council to counter false accusations of racism and/or fake hate crimes should they occur in our community. Racism, prejudice, and bigotry have no place in Temecula nor anywhere else. Race-baiting and hoax hate crimes are closely related to these more obvious categories of hatred, and they too deserve special places of infamy and outright rejection. False charges of hate crimes and racism are cynical attacks employing character assassination and slander. They must be countered and neutralized with the same vigor and intensity as countering actual racism and bigotry. Incidents of fake hate crimes have been too prevalent for some time. The early to mid 2000s saw the hate crime hoax at the Claremont Colleges, as well as the infamous Duke Lacrosse hate crime hoax. More recently, there have been the falsely accused Covington Catholic students, as well as the high-profile Jesse Smollett fake hate crime case. The recent acquittal and revelations at the Kyle Rittenhouse trial clearly demonstrated that he too was slandered as a white supremacist by people even at the highest levels of power. Such incidents of race-baiting and fake hate crimes are more common than you think, as there are many well-documented lists of fake hate crimes. The recent accusations against TBHS may very well fall into this despicable category. The adage frequently attributed to Mark Twain that a lie can travel halfway around the world while the truth is putting on its shoes seems especially applicable here. TBHS should be asking that famous 1980s Raymond Donovan question, "Which office do I go to to get my reputation back?" Instead of serving as politically correct window dressing, the Ready Commission should develop ideas and strategies to counter such instances of lies and slander should they occur in the future. Lastly, please consider this as a formal request as per the California Public Records Act for access to any and all City Council and City staff-generated documents, records, recordings, electronic email communications, open and closed City Council meeting minutes and records, and financial records and transactions pertaining to the formation of the Ready Initiative and Ready Commission, as well as with the League of California Cities and the National League of Cities. The date-range period from January 1st, 2019, through November 2021 would suffice. I, along with many other people in Temecula, desire transparency regarding the genesis of the Ready Commission." Thank you for your time and attention. And, Madam Mayor, that's time.
Okay, thank you.
The next comment is from Bernard Bedney. "In wishing all of the city of Temecula a happy Thanksgiving, I want to also take this opportunity to thank our city government for all it has always been doing on behalf of Temecula residents. I want to say something also in regards to our residents. They are special. When I have been in COVID lockdown for 13 months while at my home in Florida from February 2020 to March 2021, a nearby neighbor said a hello," I think he means nearly, "a nearby neighbor said a hello with the infrequent exception of my next-door neighbor. While I returned to Temecula after having been gone for 13 months, some nearby neighbors came out of their homes as I pulled into my driveway to greet me in wonderment of what had transpired while I was gone. One of them immediately offered to me a beer," I think offered me a beer. This was a memorable event, hard to forget. "People in Temecula, Marietta, and other communities nearby I have found to be kind and caring. They are folks who are representative of something we're sharing with more distant communities. Having said that, we don't need some things like CRT, ready, and anything else considered by many as being adverse, and nowadays often displayed on some posters in recent times, especially elsewhere. All we need is us. There must be good reasons why Temecula and the Marietta area are long considered one of the safest and most successful communities for families. It's time to take stock in that fact. Again, happy Thanksgiving, and God bless you all." Madam Mayor, those are the only two email comments. We have no in-person comments on non-agendized items, and I have no public comments on any other item on the agenda.
Okay, and I will just add that all records are readily available at the city, and you can have access to those just by filing a public records request at the city clerk's office. So, everything is transparent. We also agree that transparency is very, very important. So, now we're going to move on to City Council reports, and because I have several, I'm going to go ahead and go first, if you don't mind. So, I have something that is very humbling that I'd like to talk about. And on Sunday at night, Mayor Potem Ron and I, representing the City Council and the city of Temecula, attended in an online virtual ceremony, and it was also held in person for a very small group, by the Interfaith Council of Marietta and Temecula Valley. And these are, this is a group of people of different faiths who have come together to foster greater understanding, partnerships, things like that, inclusion. And you can see what this, the humanitarian award looks like. You know, it's very humbling to the city, for the city to be recognized as an entity. And they select an organization as well as an individual. So, we were honored to represent the city and the City Council, the Ready Commission, all of our commissions. And it says, "In grateful recognition of your extraordinary service to the Marietta and Temecula Valley area." So, thank you, Interfaith Council. You do wonderful work. Keep it up. It's a great way to bring people together, you know, to foster more, greater understanding and partnerships. So, on behalf of the City Council, thank you. And I have another slide. We do something called Coffee with the Mayor, and I know Mayor Potem Ron also did this when he was mayor. And it's really great. You gather at a restaurant, and it's open to the public. People come and ask questions or make comments. We have some staff there. We have police officers with us, and it's really kind of like an open forum. And so, there's another one coming up on November 30th, 8 o'clock, at Richie's Diner on Temecula Parkway. And we meet out on the patio, so there's plenty of room. And, you know, if you'd like to come, it's a great way to spend a morning, I think. It's a way to learn about Temecula, and if you have questions, it's a great way to get your questions answered. And I do the best I can, and if I don't know the answer to something, I have staff there, and the police, police are there also. So, that's November 30th, with Coffee with the Mayor. And then, it's a very busy month coming up City Hall. So, on December 7th, we're having the Young Women's Career Conference. And we started this conference in, I think, 2014, or maybe 2017, when I was mayor. And it is for all high school girls, regardless whether you're freshman, you know, senior, all high school girls. They come to City Hall in the morning, and we have a breakfast. And every table of high school girls has a female mentor at the table, and we cover many different careers, many different, you know, ethnicities for these girls. And so, we kind of rotate around the room, and it gives the high school students a chance to meet and get to know women in leadership positions. We hope that we're very encouraging to them. And I'll tell you, the female mentors get as much, if not more, out of this breakfast probably than the students do. We have a great time. Our students today are amazing. Our young women are amazing going on to college or pursuing careers. We, you know, try to familiarize them as best we can, but more importantly, we show them that women are totally capable of running the world, and I think that's fast becoming a reality. So, it's a great morning. So, from 8:00 to 10:00 a.m., we'll have the Young Women's Career Conference here in the Conference Center. And the city of Temecula has a wonderful history, and we rarely get a chance to talk about some of the things like our city founders. We're very fortunate to, I have to say, we stand on the shoulders of giants. This council, you know, carries on and continues the solid practices that the original councils put into place for us. And so, we have developed a new website where you can go to see some of our city founders, and there are all kinds of pictures, and there are video montages. And I think this will be great for our third graders, because every third grader in public school does a Temecula history report. And they really had to dig for Temecula history in the past. You know, they come and visit the museum, which is great. They come to City Hall, they take tours, they tour Old Town. But this will also give them a tool where they can actually print things and have video references and actually see the founders of Temecula, you know, speaking live on video. So, that online webpage is temeculaca.gov/cityfounders. And it will change regularly. We're going to be adding to it and up, and up, dating yet, on a regular basis. So, if you want to see how Temecula was formed, you want to go to that website. And there's some great stories associated. And along those same lines, we have individuals, our alums, what I just talked about. We are actually featuring those alums in a series of video presentations, and we have one for you right now. I'm Temecula Mayor Mary Ann Edwards, and I have the privilege of being able to invite you to participate in one of the intentional ways that we work to ensure that Temecula has that small-town feel. And I have the privilege of talking about a very dear friend with whom I served on the City Council, and with whom my husband served on the Community Services Commission back in the early 1990s. And that is one of our heroes and legendary leaders in Temecula, Jeff Comachero. So, Jeff and I got to serve on the City Council for at least 10, 12 years, something like that. And he was a blessing to everyone on that council. He is an idea man. He knows how to work things through and compromise without compromising what he believes to be right. In fact, he, when he retired last year, and I begged him not to, but he did anyway, well-deserved, when he retired, the agencies all came down from Riverside County, and it's the city of Riverside, to honor him, to talk about the contributions that he made to the various agencies. And it made everyone proud to know that we were so well-represented. So, now, I get to put Jeff on the spot. So, let's go to Jeff Comachero and see exactly what he's been doing since he retired, other than playing golf, because I know he's been doing that a lot.
My name's Jeff Comachero. For those of you who don't know me, I spent 21 years on the Temecula City Council, including four terms as mayor. I was first elected in 1997, and was proudly re-elected each time I ran. And at the end of 2018, I was ready to hang it up and leave it to others. So, I retired at that point. But I consider the work that I did on the council with so many others who helped and worked together to be a real labor of love and very gratifying. And I just love where the city is, and I hope it Well, I've been keeping myself busy. It's, I think the hardest thing I had to do was to learn how to go from 150 miles an hour to 20 miles an hour. But, you know, gradually, I kept picking up some more things. I'm doing a bit of nonprofit work, which I really enjoy, a very small bit of private consulting, which is about as busy as I want to be for that. And my days are full. We, I got an interesting opportunity to join the Board of Directors of the First Tee of the Inland Empire Youth Golf Program, but it's much more than that, really teaching kids life skills. And about three weeks into my tenure on the Board of Directors, the chairman came to me and said, he felt he had taken the organization as far as he could take it, and would I be interested in becoming chairman? And I just laughed. But I said, "Well, you know, if the Board of Directors is on board with that, yeah, I would do it." So, I got roped into that, and I love it. It's great. That's an unfair question, because after so many years, I have so many favorite places, it would be very difficult for me not to say that it's Penny Pickles Workshop. My wife, obviously, was the impetus for that, the creator, so to speak. And we're very proud of that as a family and as a city. It's just very unique and serves an awful lot of children and keeps everybody happy. So, I would put that at the top of my list. Probably next would be City Hall, which was a real labor of love in designing that one and seeing it get off the ground, and opening in 2010. Same with the Community Theater and Old Town in general. I know I said early on in my career that I wanted Old Town to be my legacy someday. So, we're proud of that one as well. I just love to build things. You know, it's, everybody on the council has their specialty, some maybe into programs or whatever. For me, it was always building things, the library, all those things. Oh, that's easy. It's the people. I honestly don't miss the work. You know, it got to a point where I felt I had really done what I wanted to do in my tenure there, and wasn't a whole lot left to build. And so, since I love building. But I do miss the people very much, at all the levels. And, you know, I come back and say hi every now and then. Well, you know, all the things that made Temecula what it is are still very relevant. So, I think it's still very important to maintain our small-town feel as we continue to grow. There's not a whole lot of growth left. But, you know, it's clear that that's what is of value to our citizens. It certainly is to my family and I. So, I think that's very important. And although we see some of those things sometimes that we do as a little bit hokey, like the Fourth of July Parade and the Christmas Parade, they have so much value to our citizens in just demonstrating how warm and friendly the city is. So, I'd love to see that continue. I also sometimes, I don't watch a lot of council meetings these days, and I don't engage too much, because I don't think it's fair for those who came before to kind of inject themselves too much into the process. It's a hard enough job for those who are already there. But I'm a little dismayed at the lack of harmony, and I'd love to see everybody work together a little better than they do. To me, that's always been the hallmark of our city, and it's what made our city what it is. And there's just so much that can be accomplished by collaborating rather than infighting here and there. So, if I had any advice for the council, I'd say, you know, lay down your arms and work together, because that's what the citizens elected you for.
You know, when he decided to run for City Council, he'd never done anything like that before. I was his first campaign contributor, and I think, I think Tom and I gave him $50. So, you know, it was not, that is nothing when it comes to campaigns. Campaigns are typically very expensive. But I was his first campaign contributor, and he still remembers to this day. And he teases me now, because it was only $50. He is well worth that $50 a million times over. Temecula owes Jeff and Pat Comachero more than we could ever say. Great leaders, great alumni, you know, great friends. Great friends is true. Great friends to the residents of Temecula, great friends to City Council members and city staff. And one thing that Jeff did not mention, and I will mention intentionally, is that since the day, well, since before Penny Pickles Workshop opened, Jeff was instrumental in procuring, you know, working to provide city funding for that facility. And Pat has worked there every day as a volunteer, receiving no salary. And she really works with the volunteers at the museum and the very small-paid staff that they have. And if you go online and look at Penny Pickles, you will be amazed by all the programs and activities they have for kids. And it's not just Temecula kids. Kids come from all over the place. Buses pull up to Penny Pickles, because it's really not a museum. It is an experience. And if you are fortunate enough to see Professor Phineas Penny Pickle, then I want to know about it, because no one's ever seen him. about it, because no one's ever seen him. But we know he's there. So Jeff and Pat, we love you, and we hope you're having a great time. And you should be calling more often. That's what the mother always says. You're not calling me enough. So finally, I'm just going to mention very briefly that Temecula lost a hero this past week, and Joseph Travis Hart, owner of Hart Wineries, has been a staple in Temecula for so long. And so in honor of his contributions and his wonderful attitude, he was a very kind man, we will be adjourning today's, tonight's city council meeting in his name to recognize him and thank him. Okay, so I have Zach on my list.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And what a wonderful video series that was. It's really nice to hear from Jeff again. Wise words. I have a slide. So as First Vice Chair of Riverside Transit Agency, I'd just like to let everyone know that the Board of Directors had to name Kristin Worsinski as the new Chief Executive Officer. This is effective at the end of this year. She will succeed Larry Rubio, who has led the agency since 2001. Fun fact, Jeff Comachero, former mayor and council member, shared with me that 2001 was his first year on the board, and he was part of that hiring process for Larry. So thought that was, thought that was quite interesting. So at RTA, Kristin has been the Director of Planning. She oversaw the development of the agency's routes and schedules, short-term transit plans, and grant applications. Very valuable asset. She is going to do just wonderful things for RTA, so we're really excited for that. The humanitarian award, I just wanted to just briefly say thank you for attending that. Mayor Pro Temeron, thank you for attending that event. And I just want to express how proud I am of the council and the commissioners and staff and everyone involved in that process. That award's a big deal. I'm really proud of us, so.
Thank you.
Thanks. And then I would be remiss, and I'm going to take a personal point of privilege. 21 years ago tomorrow, Jennifer and I were married.
Aww, congratulations.
And so I'm wearing the tie I wore at her wedding. And I just want to tell Jennifer, I know she's watching, the kids are watching, they always do, thank you for making me the best version of myself and just a better person, much different than I was in 2000 when we were married. So I love you, and hopefully we'll be home soon.
Aww, that's very sweet. Does anybody else have any comments? Matt, go ahead.
That's tough to follow.
That is very sweet.
I'll say hi to my wife. Hi, Kelsey. Love you.
Yeah, Tom, Tom, 45 years in last October. Thank you, Tom, 45 years.
So, but just wanted to say it was a great evening Sunday to join the mayor at the Interfaith Council and receive the award on behalf of the city for humanitarian of the year. I know the competition was, you know, pretty stiff. We have remarkable organizations throughout Marietta Temecula area that, you know, do such wonderful service for our community. And so for the city to be recognized that way, it truly is humbling and meaningful. I wanted to mention briefly, I met with our council colleague from Marietta, Lori Stone, and Kim Garrish from Michelle's Place. And we were talking a little bit about the Cancer Task Force and some of the continuing needs. And so based on those conversations, I'll be bringing back some items. I know we have a process now for bringing items back for discussion on the agenda and all that. And I'll be bringing back some things in the new year. Looking at the Cancer Task Force and what it accomplished was pretty remarkable, but there's, there's a lot more needs out there. And, and, you know, we've probably all seen the struggles that we're having in public health and medicine right now, and we're not immune to that here. And it's certainly making things challenging for those folks who are dealing with cancer and cancer treatment and recovery. So certainly a lot of good ideas, and we'd love to reinvigorate that, that process once again. And that is all I have.
Great. So Jeff, do you have something?
Do you have anything, Mayor?
No.
The only thing I would say is Happy Thanksgiving to y'all.
Very good.
Well, Happy Thanksgiving. All right, so if I can have my first slide, so I know which one I'm talking about. Excellent. Okay, so this ended up occurring on Sunday. I just want to thank, first off, I was invited by the, where was I? I was invited by the Holocaust and Remembrance Foundation, and I was able to join with the Marietta City Council members, Lori Stone and John Ingram, to be able to just sit and be able to talk and listen to Dr. Hillel, I'm going to mention that, Hillel Newman. And he's the Consul General for Israel to the Pacific Southwest. And I have to tell you, it was an incredible afternoon to be able to talk with him and to just get updates on what's going on all over the world and how it's affecting us. And also, I got to see the new memorial that they're going to be putting in over there. They had a model in there for the Holocaust Educational Memorial, which I know that city council member Jeff, or John Ingram, why am I saying John Ingram? Is due for, they're all due for completion in 2022. So that was really interesting to see, just something new and something different. I'm really trying to venture out into some of the other city areas to see what they're doing, so we can always, you know, just get some feedback in here as well. So that was one, that was the model that they had. And then the other thing I wanted to do, if you can put up the other slide, please? It was last week. Wonderful. So I had the opportunity, thanks to SWAG city staff and the HOT team, to be able to go out to Lake Elsinore. So thank you guys for taking me out. A couple of weeks ago, I was able to go on foot and get into some of the encampments that are here in Temecula, and I've brought that to you guys before in the past. But this time, they wanted to, we wanted to step it up a little bit and see what other cities are doing. I believe that city council member Schwenk had been out there before, and it's called the Anchor. It's out in Lake Elsinore. And if most of you don't know what that is, it's a transitional home for the homeless. I'll be honest, I had a little bit of hesitation to understand what it was, and so I needed to step in and actually get more of an understanding of it. I have to say, it was absolutely incredible, the rules and regulations that they had sent down, and also getting these people off the streets and trying to get them into society, which was incredible. They were able to give them fresh haircuts, clothes, shoes, just so they feel more human, I want to say, that they're not on the streets. And it just, it's incredible to watch the love that they all had for them, for the SWAG team, because that's, the SWAG team runs it, along with the city, to be able to see what they're doing together to get them off the streets. Some of the areas I looked at, it's like a bridge, they're getting them ID cards, licenses, whatever they're needing to get them into their homes, which is so important for when even giving somebody a pair of socks, believe it or not, is a huge thing. So it's, I just want to thank you guys for all you're doing and taking me out there and just giving me an experience that, that taught me something really special. So thank you very much, and I wish all of you a Happy Thanksgiving as well. So thank you.
And thank you. Moving on to the consent calendar. All matters listed under consent calendar are considered to be routine, and all will be enacted by one roll call vote. There will be no discussion of these items unless members of the city council request specific items be removed from the consent calendar for separate action. A total of 30 minutes is provided for members of the public to address the city council on items that appear on the consent calendar. Each speaker is limited to three minutes. Public comments may be made in person at the meeting by submitting a speaker card to the city clerk or deputy city clerk, or by submitting an email to be read aloud into the record at the meeting. Email comments must be submitted to councilcomments@temeculaca.gov. Speaker cards for in-person comments will be called in the order received by the city clerk or deputy city clerk, and then, if time remains, email comments will be read. Email comments in all matters must be received prior to the time the item is called for public comments. All public participation is governed by council policy regarding public participation at meetings adopted by Resolution 2021-54. Okay, item number one, waive reading of standard ordinances and resolutions. Number two, approve action minutes of November 9, 2021. Three, approve list of demands. Four, approve purchase and sale agreement for partial acquisition of loss of lease rent for billboard on assessor's parcel number 910-060-004, comma, 910-060-008, and 910-06014. Okay, and number five, approve increase to the contingency for the sidewalks, Old Town Improvements Project, Fifth Street from Old Town Front Street to Marietta Creek, PW20-02. And number six, approve track map 37341-5, located on the east side of Butterfield Stage Road between Caie Chapos, Marietta Hot Springs Road. Okay, any questions or anything on consent calendar? Okay, I have a motion and a second. Let's vote. And, all right, thank you very much. It's unanimous. And we're going to recess the city council meeting and go to chairman, or is it president?
Presidente.
Presidente of the Temecula Community Services.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I will now call tonight's Temecula Community Services District meeting to order. Madam City Clerk, please note that we are all still here. Do we have any public comments this evening?
We do not, Mr. President.
Thanks. I'll go and dispense with the reading of those roles, and we will move on to our consent calendar. All matters listed under the consent calendar are considered to be routine, and all will be enacted by one roll call vote. There will be no discussion of these items unless members of the Community Services District request specific items to be removed from the consent calendar for separate action. A total of 30 minutes is provided for members of the public to address the Board of Directors on items that appear on the consent calendar. Each speaker is limited to three minutes. Public comments may be made in person at the meeting by submitting a speaker card to the city clerk or deputy city clerk, or by submitting an email to be read aloud into the record at the meeting. Email comments must be submitted to councilcomments@temeculaca.gov. Speaker cards for in-person comments will be called in the order received by the city clerk or deputy city clerk, and then, if time remains, email comments will be read. Email comments on all matters must be received prior to the time the item is called for public comments. All public participation is governed by the council policy regarding public participation at meetings adopted by Resolution number 2021-54. Item number seven, approve action minutes of November 9, 2021.
Move approval.
Second. All right, we have a motion and a second. Let us vote. Okay, wonderful. That passes 5-0. Thank you very much. We have a Director's Report. Director Russo, do we have anything this evening?
We do indeed. If we can get that slide up. As you can see, we're coming into our busy holiday season, which we're so excited about being able to welcome the community back to these wonderful events. First of all, we'll be kicking off the holiday season on Monday, November 29, when we host our annual Christmas tree lighting ceremony at the Temecula Duck Pond. Everyone can enjoy a cup of hot chocolate, tell Santa what they went for Christmas, and listen to a festive performance by the Great Oak High School Jazz Band. And then on Friday, December 3, we have Santa's Electric Light Parade, where everyone can attend the parade at 7:00 PM sharp. And just a reminder to the entire community, it is moving back up to its original home on Jefferson. So the parade's going to kick off at the intersection of Jefferson Avenue and Del Rio Road, and then it's going to travel north from there. Everyone should bring their blankets and chairs and enjoy the entries and just enjoy the theme of Temecula Cares and, once again, having a lovely parade to attend. And then finally, Temecula on Ice, the grand opening will be Friday, December 10, at 5:00 PM. And the rink will be open through January 2. So we'll have our usual state-of-the-art ice rink, along with rental skates, bobby skating aid, which is that, like, plastic sort of cart thing that you can push if, like me, you don't actually know how to ice skate.
I believe we're going to have the traditional race this year of city council members being pushed on the ice.
We certainly hope so.
I'm going to defend my title.
Don't ask me how.
Actually, I only won once. It was the first year, and then I've lost every year since then, so I feel like this could be my year.
Okay. You heard it here, folks. All right. I'm sorry, go ahead.
No, no, wonderful. That's very exciting news. So as always, more information about all of this is available online, and we'll be posting on social media. So if you don't recall the details, just stay tuned and enjoy those holiday events. And now I'd like to invite our Community Services Administrative Services Manager, who's in charge of our homeless outreach team, Mike Wooton, to the podium. And he and the team are going to give you an update about our homeless outreach activities.
Wonderful, thank you. Welcome.
Thank you, Director Russo. Good evening, Mr. President and members of the board. I'm going to let Mark Martinez and Patrice Brown take over the stats and some success stories. But I do just want to point out, mostly because we don't have a, an update that we'll be providing in December, excuse me, but you'll see the numbers through October, but I do just want to point out that we've actually, over the past two weeks, had more successes than we had for the entire month of October. So we've had six individuals that have exited the street this week and last week. Three of those have been Temecula homeless individuals for 10 and 15 years, so some longtime homeless. So with that, I'd like to pass it on to Mark to go over the stats.
Thank you, Mike. Good evening. I will be going over the homeless outreach update. For the month of October, we had 10 clients, so that brings our total of 122 clients for the year. For street exits, we have four for the month of October, and that brings our total to 64 for the 2021. Our team is very happy about zero, zero returns to the streets for this month. There were 12 illegal encampments removed in the city. Can you do a next slide, please? Now I'll pass it to Patrice Brown, and she will tell us some of our success stories for the month. Thank you.
Good evening. On Friday, 10/8, HOT Team reached out to the family of a Marietta homeless male who they came across in Old Town. Client suffers from mental health and substance abuse. HOT Team was able to talk to his parents over the phone, and they agreed to accept him back if he's willing to follow the house rules, accept treatment, and address his issues. HOT then provided transportation for the family reunification in Marietta. On Wednesday, 10/20, a female client who has tried multiple housing resources that hasn't really worked out for her, after being forced out of a room she was renting in Temecula. She has been actively working with SWAG and visiting the Help Center frequently, trying to find housing resources. She suffers from mental health issues like depression, autism, and different forms of trauma. She accepted permanent housing at Orange County Rescue Mission and is very excited to start the program. Temecula homeless couple that has been actively working with multiple organizations within Temecula/Marietta area, including the Help Center and SWAG, has received permanent housing in Riverside with Operation Lighthouse, thanks to CMOH, who provided case management for the couple and helped them move into their place. That concludes our report. Thank you.
Wonderful. Does anyone have any questions or, great?
Amazing.
Yeah, it really is, and thank you for coming and telling this story. And I say this, and I'll say it every time we do this, we really appreciate you, we appreciate SWAG, appreciate our HOT homeless outreach team, not our HOT team, our homeless outreach team. So again, thank you for everything that you do in our community. It's a good story to tell, so thanks.
Happy Thanksgiving.
Yeah, Happy Thanksgiving. All right, General Managers' Report, anything?
Nothing further, Mr. President.
Okay, Directors, anything? All right, I will go ahead and move to adjourn this meeting to our next regularly scheduled meeting, December 14. We're adjourned.
And I will reconvene the Temecula City Council. We have a public hearing, so any person may submit written comments to the Temecula City Council before a public hearing, or may appear and be heard in support of or in opposition to approval of the projects at the time of the hearing. If you challenge any of the projects in court, you may be limited to raising only those issues you or someone else raised at the public hearing or in written correspondence delivered to the city clerk at or prior to public hearing. For all public hearings, each speaker is limited to five minutes. Public comments may be made in person at the meeting by submitting a speaker card to the city clerk or deputy city clerk, or by submitting an email to be read aloud into the record at, at the meeting. Email comments must be submitted to councilcomments@temeculaca.gov. Email comments on all matters, including those not on the agenda, must be received prior to the time the item is called for public comments. At public hearings involving land use matters, the property owner or the applicant slash property owner has the burden of proof and therefore shall be allowed 15 minutes for initial presentation and an additional 10 minutes for rebuttal by its development team following other comments on the matter. The mayor may allow more time if required to provide due process for the property owner or applicant. An appellant, other than the property owner or applicant, and the spokesperson for an organized group of residents residing within the noticed area of the property, which is the subject of the public hearing, shall be allowed 15 minutes to present the appellant's position to the council. The mayor may allow more time if required to provide due process for the appellant. All other members of the public may speak during the public hearing for a maximum period of five minutes each. Deferral of one speaker's time to another is not permitted. In the event there's a large number of speakers, the mayor may reduce the maximum time limit for members of the public to speak. All public participation is governed by the council policy regarding public participation at meetings adopted by Resolution number 2021-54. And this is item number eight, Conduct Tax Equity and Fiscal Responsibility Act, and that's TEFRA, Hearing Approving Tax Exempt Bonds for the Rancho Los Bolsoz Project, Rancho Highlands, located at 43519, 43513, and 43602 West Bantana Street, adjacent to 28250 Ynez Road, and Approving Joint Exercise of Powers Agreement relating to the California Municipal Finance Authority. Okay, so could we have a staff report? And Mr. Watson, are you doing this one?
Yes, Madam Mayor, members of the council.
Thank you.
Good evening. Thank you. As you mentioned, we're here tonight to conduct the Tax Equity and Fiscal Responsibility Act Hearing, otherwise known as a TEFRA Hearing, for the potential approval of tax-exempt bonds for the Rancho's, Rancho Los Bolsoz Project over at the Rancho Highlands apartment development. The borrower, the borrower, which is Ynez Road Housing Partners LP, requested that California Municipal Financing Authority, otherwise known as the CMFA, serve as the municipal issuer of the bonds in an aggregate principal amount not to exceed $20 million of tax-exempt revenue bonds. exempt revenue bonds. The proceeds of the bonds will be to finance or refinance the acquisition, construction, improvement, and equipping of a multifamily residential housing project, otherwise known as Rancho Los Bolsoas. The project consists of two-hundred-and-seventy units, of which fifty-five restricted as affordable to houses making no more than eighty percent of the area meeting income. And this hearing is really in regards only to the affordable housing units, not to the market rate units. In order for all or a portion of the bonds to be qualified as tax exempt bonds, the City of Temecula must conduct a public hearing, which is we're doing now, called a TEFRA hearing, providing the members of the community an opportunity to speak in favor or against the use of tax exempt bonds for the financing of the project. Following the close of the TEFRA hearing, the council must provide its approval of the issuance of the bonds for the financing of the project. It's very, very important to mention, and I'll reiterate it a little later on, that the City of Temecula will not incur any debt as a part of this process. The CMFA was created in January, on January first, two thousand and four, pursuant to the Joint Exercise of Powers Agreement to promote economic, cultural, and community development through the financing of economic development and charitable activities throughout the state of California. To date, over three hundred and thirty municipalities have become members of CMFA. The CMFA was formed to assist local governments, nonprofit organizations, and businesses with the issuance of taxable and tax exempt bonds. In order for the CMFA to have the authority to serve as the issuer of the bonds for the project, it is necessary for the city to become a member of the CMFA. The joint powers, oh, excuse me, the Joint Exercise of Powers Agreement provides that the CMFA is a public entity, separate and apart from each member executing the agreement. The city would be a member. The debts, liabilities, and obligations of the CMFA do not constitute debts, liabilities, or obligations of the members executing the agreement. The bonds to be issued by the CMFA for the project will be sole responsibility of the borrower, and the city will have no financial, legal, legal liability or responsibility for the project or the repayment of the bonds for, repayment of the bonds for the financing of the project. There are no costs associated with membership in the CMFA for the city, and the city will in no way become exposed to any financial liability by reason of its membership in the CMFA. In addition, participation by the city in the CMFA will not impact the city's appropriations limit and will not constitute any type of indebtedness by the city. Outside of holding the TEFRA hearing, adopting the resolution required, and executing the Joint Exercise of Powers Agreement of the CMFA, no other participation or activity of the city or the city council with respect to the issues of the bonds will be required. And with that, staff is recommending the council adopt the resolution as proposed and presented by staff. That concludes my presentation. Available for any questions.
Thank you, Luke. Do we have questions? Anyone? No, go ahead, Madam.
I mean, we know how much we love the process that this project went through. What happens if we vote no tonight?
If you vote no, then the project would not be able to issue tax exempt bonds, and they would not have the financing necessary to complete the affordable portion of the project, not the market rate side of the project.
So that would still move forward?
That still would potentially move forward. That financing is separate from, the market rate financing is completely separate from the affordable financing. This is only related to the affordable units financing.
But as the project's already been approved, then it would just delay the affordable piece, not the...
It would delay the affordable piece, certainly, and cause probably some significant financial issues for the affordable developer.
Okay. Thank you.
And Luke, true or false, that would also be in noncompliance of California new laws regarding affordable housing and the facilitation of affordable housing by the state of California?
Right. So the creation of these units would certainly help the city with its arena numbers, particularly in the lower end of the income spectrum. So from that perspective, it is benefit to the city. And yes, it does help us comply with those laws.
Zach?
Yeah, I mean, I think just, Luke, I believe you said it in your presentation, but the city is contributing no money and will incur zero debt to provide fifty-five affordable units to the, to the City of Temecula's arena numbers. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay.
Okay. Anyone else? No? Okay, so this is a public hearing, so I will go ahead and open the public hearing. And do we have any comments?
We do not.
We do not have any comments, so I will say anyone in the audience going once, twice? So, Madam City Clerk, can you, can you ask, how do we?
We'll just invite her up to the podium and just...
Come on up. Thank you. I always want to make sure anybody has a comment.
Thank you. I appreciate that. Because I didn't see it. I'm just taking notes. Who's paying for the bonds? Nothing's free. Where's the money coming from? I mean, that entity is, where's the money coming from?
Now, this isn't a dialogue that we can...
Where can I find out the information? Because I'd sure like to know. Who's paying for that?
So...
I've called him before. I called him last week. He didn't call me back. I'll call you again.
So I, yes, so do that, and he will provide documentation. So, okay? Go ahead, go ahead.
Mr. Watson, can you just kindly just answer the...
I think I would ask the applicant or a member of CMFA to come up and explain that.
Okay, good. Hi?
Hello. Anthony Stubbs with the California Municipal Finance Authority, CMFA. Thanks for having us here tonight. The answer to the question is, this is just like any, any type of financing. It's a private financing between the borrower and their bank. So it's a, it's a loan that they have applied for. They'll work with their bank. And just like any financing for housing or development, it's simply a loan between the borrower and their bank. The reason we're here tonight is because to get that tax exempt status, it has to be for a qualified purpose, which it is. It's for affordable housing, and that's what gives it the tax exempt status.
Stu?
Yeah, I have a question. So I, I think her thought was, who's paying the money back?
The borrower's paying the money back. These are revenue bonds, so the, the money to pay the loan back is generated from the revenue of the project.
So is it kind of like a, not an HOA, but a, what do they call that when you, a developer borrows money? Melrose. Is it like melrose?
Not in this case, no. This, this is, like I mentioned, this is simply a loan that's paid back from the revenues of the project.
Okay.
So, completely separate from...
It's paid, it's paid back from the rents.
From the rents. Yes, revenues are the, yeah, the rents in this case.
Got it. Okay.
It's, it's the same as if any residential project came in and the owner of that project went out and got a loan, and it was repaid by the, the rents collected from the tenants. And that's the same situation here.
Okay, exactly.
Good. All right, thank you very much. All right, so no other public comments, Madam City Clerk? All right, so then I can close the public hearing, and we can have council discussion, or we can move to motion.
I'll move the item if there's no discussion.
I would like to just clarify again.
Go ahead, Stu.
So basically, we're not, this is not something the City of Temecula is doing. The only thing we are, we're a conduit, correct, for, for this process to take place so that they can get their funding to provide low-cost housing, correct?
That is correct.
Okay. So that, that's all I just wanted to make clear for all the public sitting out there, that that's, that's what this is. We're not taking on this debt. The City of Temecula's not doing that. It's all the developer himself. But it has to be approved by a legislative body, correct?
That's correct.
Got it.
Thank you, Stu. Okay, so we need a motion and a second?
Motion, I'll second.
Okay, a motion and a second, so we can go ahead and vote. And, I can't see it, but I'm assuming that that is unanimous.
Councilmember Ron, are you voting in the affirmative? It's unanimous.
He's trying. There you go. Okay, thank you very much. All right, so we have one business item. Any, do we have any public comments for this one? And I'll go ahead and read it anyway.
No, Madam Mayor, actually, we do, we have two business items, and neither item has a public comment.
Okay. Okay, so any member of the public may address the city council on items that appear on the business portion of the agenda. Each speaker is limited to five minutes. Public comments may be made in person at the meeting by submitting a speaker card to the city clerk or deputy city clerk, or by submitting an email to be read aloud into the record at the meeting. Email comments must be submitted to councilcomments@temeculaca.gov. Speaker cards for in-person comments will be called in the order received by the city clerk or deputy city clerk, and then, if time remains, email comments will be read. Email comments on all matters must be received prior to the time the item is called for public comments. All public participation is governed by the Council Policy Regarding Public Participation at Meetings adopted by Resolution Number 2021-54. Item number nine, introduce ordinance amending Article One and Article, is it fifteen, fourteen? Thank you, of Chapter eight point two zero of the Temecula Municipal Code pursuant to SB one three eight three regulations. Okay, Mr. Thomas.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and good evening, Madam Mayor and council members. So the item before you is to introduce an ordinance that amends the city's municipal code, and you read the sections of the code that this ordinance amends, and it is to include organic waste disposal reduction requirements. And these requirements came about as a result of a state law that was passed a few years ago known as SB thirteen eighty-three. The ordinance that you have before you is actually a fairly lengthy ordinance, and the reason for that is this is the document that was provided to us by the State of California Department of Recycling, known as CalRecycle, that provided this template ordinance for adoption by all cities and counties to impose, implement these requirements. Some background, the council did adopt an ordinance last year, ordinance number two-thousand-and-twenty-zero-nine, which implemented a few previous state legislative acts that are in this same arena. So AB three forty-one, which is, was passed in two thousand and twelve, and AB eighteen twenty-six in two thousand and sixteen. And these two laws included the, what's known as the mandatory commercial recycling and mandatory commercial organic recycling requirements. So they put into place the requirement that all commercial businesses separate and recycle any recyclable materials, and that they also separate and recycle any organics, organic material that can be recycled. So the law that we're discussing this evening and the ordinance that implements this requirement, again, is known as Senate Bill SB thirteen eighty-three, and it was, this was passed in two thousand and sixteen. This, this law and the ordinance goes into effect in January of two thousand and twenty-two, so this coming January, and essentially requires that all, both residential and commercial solid waste and recycling customers now start recycling organic material. And there's also quite a few other requirements that are, were included in the legislation that are included in this ordinance, and some new programs that we'll be implementing to meet those requirements. So the, the basic requirement is that both residential, single-family and multifamily, as well as commercial businesses, now recycle any organic material that they produce. And as far as the residential goes, the way that those materials will be recycled is those, those residences will be asked to put their organic material, and essentially it's, it's food waste, in with their green recycling or their landscape recycling in their green container. So that material can be put in with the green waste, the green container, and it will be picked up by our hauler, CRNR, and then recycled as part of the, the new requirements. With commercial businesses, they'll actually need to subscribe to that service from CRNR. They will have a third bin, so currently they have a trash and a recycling bin, and they'll also need to have an organics bin in order to be able to recycle their organic materials. The, what you can see on the slide here is a sticker, basically, that will be given to all residential homes, and they'll be able to put that on their can, and that'll give them direction as to what they, you know, can and cannot put in their green bin. One of the requirements of the ordinance and the law is that there be a public education campaign. So we've actually submitted and put out quite a bit of public education to all homes and businesses in the city, explaining this new requirement that goes into effect this coming January. There'll be some information that goes out in the next monthly City Managers' e-newsletter, and in our next community newsletter, there'll be information that goes out, giving this information to all the homeowners and businesses as well. So as I mentioned, in addition to just the basic requirement that organic material be recycled, there's several other programs that are required by this legislation. I'm just gonna go through those bullet points. So the first one, as I mentioned, the requirements for single-family homes to recycle their organic material, and again, that'll be just placed in their, in their green container and picked up as part of their normal trash and recycling service. Also, the requirement applies to commercial businesses, as well as multifamily residential complexes, which get their service through a, a commercial trash and recycling service. There are provisions in the, in the legislation and the ordinance that allow for waivers. So for example, if a commercial business just doesn't generate a significant amount of organic material, they can apply for a waiver of the requirement. And also, say, for example, if they just don't have a location where they can store a container, they can apply for a waiver based on that lack of space. So there are some provisions in the, in the ordinance and the, and the laws that allow for those waivers. There is a, an allowance for a self-hauler, so someone who prefers to take their own trash and recycling material to a facility that where it can be recycled. However, anybody who chooses to do that is going to be required to keep records of what it is that they recycle and where they take it, so that if we need to have access to those records, we can, we can get that, just to ensure that they're in compliance with the requirements. There's an enforcement program that's included with, with the legislation and the ordinance, and we'll be working with CRNR, our hauler, to implement that enforcement program, where there are potentially going to be inspections of, of trash containers and trash loads to verify that there's no recyclable materials being included in the, in the trash containers. And then we also have provisions in the ordinance that allow for citations to be issued. It would be a code violation if, if it is determined that someone is not recycling the material that they are required to recycle. So that would be, that would be something that the city would then need to enforce as part of our code enforcement program. There's a, there's what's called an edible food recycling program that's required in this, in this legislation. And so basically, the, what are referred to as Tier One and Tier Two commercial edible food generators are required to report on the edible food that they are disposing of that can be recycled. The, the first part of the program is the Tier One generators, and those are pretty much just like the, the grocery stores, the markets, that generate a significant amount of edible food that, that they would be disposing of and could be, you know, reused or recycled. We're also required to have a certain number of food recovery organizations within the city that can then collect that edible food and potentially be able to reuse that, those materials. We currently, within the City of Temecula, the Community Mission of Hope, the CMOH, runs the food bank, and they do pick up edible food from these Tier One generators and utilize that through distribution at their food bank. So we do have the, the food recovery organizations in, in place now that, that can meet that requirement. The edible food generators will be required to report the material that they are disposing of to the state, and there will be tracking of the, both the edible food that's, that's generated, as well as the food recovery organization's collection of that material. There's requirements for the trash haulers and facility operators for the recycling of the organic material. In our case, we're very fortunate that CRNR went to the effort of constructing their anaerobic digester facility located in Paris, and so they've got adequate capacity for all the organic material that is going to be generated in Temecula to be able to be processed at that facility. So we'll, we'll easily be able to meet that requirement. And last but not least, the legislation requires a, a procurement program. And what that is, is it's basically, there'll, there'll be a calculation that, that'll be done that determines the amount of renewable material that the city must, must purchase and utilize. So the materials that we currently, the renewable material that we currently utilize, it's pretty much the mulch and compost that gets generated from the green waste and from, say, our landscaping and tree trimming operations. So we'll get credit for the, the mulch and compost that, that we utilize and purchase. Also, one of the, the renewable, I'll call it material that is, is generated and utilized is at the CRNR anaerobic digester facility. They generate methane gas... They generate methane gas within the, the vessels that the material is processed in, and that methane gas is collected and then utilized as fuel for the trash trucks. So, we'll get credit for the methane gas that's, that's utilized by the CRNR trash trucks. And then lastly, we believe that we'll be able to get credit for the solar electricity that's generated at the SMUR facility that we'll be purchasing through the power purchase agreement that we have with that, that owner of that solar facility. So, we believe that we are well on the way of complying with the procurement requirements that are required as part of this program as well. So, that's a summary of what's required to go into effect on January 1st. We feel like we're, we're well on our way to meeting all the requirements. We've been tracking with CRNR the number of commercial businesses that are participating in this program, and we're getting to the point where we've got a, a very large number of the businesses already in compliance or qualifying for the waivers or the exemptions. So, we feel like we're well underway with meeting all these requirements, and adoption of this ordinance is, is one of those requirements. So, that concludes the staff report, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Pat, are you telling me that after we moved to Temecula, we haven't had to buy potting soil, or topsoil, or anything for any of our garden areas, or my, you know, potted plants? Are you telling me I can no longer compost all of our trimmings, you know, grass clippings and all of that?
No, you can still do that yourself, absolutely. So, just you can't put that material in your trash container.
Okay. Oh, yeah, I never would do that, anyway. Any other questions? Nope? All right, so...
I have a couple of questions.
Okay, go ahead.
At least I was able to, this year, to be able to go down to CRNR and be able to see the anaerobic digester. I know we had a, it was good going down there and getting a brief on what that's all about. So, just out of curiosity, to enforce this, what is that looking as for cost? Because they're going now through people's trash cans to find food?
So, they will, there is a requirement in this legislation that there be a inspection and an enforcement program. So, we haven't actually finalized exactly what that program will look like, but there will need to be some inspection of the, the trash containers, essentially, to verify that they are not being, that recyclable material is not being put in the trash containers. So, CRNR will likely be implementing that program, and any costs associated with that will be incorporated into their rates, essentially. And what, what will happen is, next year, we'll be bringing forward an amendment to the franchise agreement with CRNR, and we haven't actually gotten the cost information from them as to what they expect that that program will cost. But when we do have that information, we'll be bringing forward an amendment to their agreement to incorporate that into their agreement, and then into the rates that they charge the customers.
Okay, and, so, teach me this, why did the state push this through to law? I mean, I understand some of it, but...
So, it's the, the intent is to reduce the amount of methane gas that's coming off of the landfills, so that the, the state believes that by diverting this organic material from going to the landfills, and it going to a recycling facility and being recycled, it will not generate as much methane gas, and then contribute to the greenhouse gas and, and climate change issues that we have in this world.
But aren't they already separating everything when they're there? Because when I was there, I remember that, I think it was Alex told me specifically, they have an entire systematic way of doing all that.
So, the, the green waste is currently being separated and processed at the anaerobic digester. This, these requirements now require that any food waste also be diverted from the landfill and included in with the green waste and recycled. So, any organic material now, essentially, is required to be recycled.
And then, but yet, we still don't know the expense for the city of what that's going to look like?
Right.
I'm just concerned that if somebody decides to drop something in my trash can and code enforcement comes, I could see, I'm just saying.
That's the point.
It's, I'm going to be honest, I mean, I'm like, it's my trash can. Okay, all right.
Go ahead, Matt, you have a question?
Well, I think we, but, Pat, I mean, correct me if I'm wrong, but we've been doing this for several years already, right? I mean, so, at least from a residential perspective, this program was established, we were actually the first city, I think, in the region to sign up with the anaerobic digester facility, which, the good news is, it kept our costs substantially lower than every other city in the region since we were first to adopt. So, it shouldn't be a big change, you know, I mean, we've, they've, we've put out the brochure, brochures and the information, and even had recycling bins for, for residential use and all that, for folks to use on their countertop to collect their, their food waste and all that. So, so this shouldn't be a big transition. I think this piece is, not just that it's, you know, mandated now by the state, but that it also includes the commercial side. Is that, am I understanding that correctly?
That's correct, and then also includes the other, you know, the edible food diversion programs and the procurement requirements and some of the other parts of this, this attempt to divert the, the organic material from the landfills.
So, so then, just following on that, you know, with the residential or commercial, for that matter, I think one of the biggest struggles we're running into right now are the folks who are putting into the waste stream things that shouldn't be there, toxic materials, hazardous materials, lithium-ion batteries. You know, we've seen a number of waste truck fires that have occurred because folks are, you know, throwing things away that they shouldn't, and then they're igniting the, the hall and causing some pretty dramatic. So, as, as, you know, interested as I am in, you know, getting everybody to, you know, recycle their green waste, we're kind of doing that already. I see that as a much more pressing need, and so, in, in your conversations with CRNR, as we start doing the outreach and education piece, can really emphasize this idea of the, the toxic, the hazardous materials, because, you know, we've had, you know, some major wildfire events because of that, you know, people's lives and property are at risk because you inadvertently throw away, you know, a battery or, or something that can cause a pretty big problem. And I see that as, you know, I'm, I'm kind of surprised the state isn't more focused, you know, frankly, on that, than worried about, you know, whether or not my, you know, eggshells are put in my trash bin. But, you know, despite that, I mean, you know, is there any way we can kind of work with CRNR to improve that messaging?
Yeah, absolutely, and, and there are regular events for people to drop off household hazardous waste. We have those events at our facilities a couple of times a year, and then there's some permanent facilities where people can take those materials. So, so you are, you are correct that, that it is illegal to put those types of materials in with your trash, and we can certainly work on better messaging for the opportunities to dispose of household hazardous waste.
Last question, what would the cost of the fines be? Or we wouldn't even know just yet?
They're actually in the ordinance, so it's, it's a code violation, and there was actually a mandated fine amount that was provided in this ordinance by the state. So, the initial fine is, for the first violation is $150, and then I believe it's two...
Five hundred. Second violation is five hundred, and then a thousand for after that.
I just wanted to get that on the record, so the public can hear that, so.
And that's, that's the piece that's new. I mean, we were the pilot program, as Matt said, and so, it's the enforcement and the fines that are new to Temecula.
Right. And this is, this is a little bit different than our typical code violation fine. This was, this fine amount was mandated as part of this legislation to be incorporated into the city's code.
And if we don't incorporate it into the city's code?
Then we would not be in compliance with the state's requirements under SB 1383.
And we could be fined. We would be fined heavily.
Yeah, and so, Matt, go ahead and talk about that.
Oh, well, yeah, no, I mean, the city would, would be, you know, it was funny, years ago, when I was working with the city of San Diego, I remember at, at one point, they put out a campaign, recycle or else, right? And they had billboards everywhere, and recycle or else. It sounded ominous, but, but we all knew on the city's side, and I think that, I can't remember the, the legislation, Peter, back then, it was like AB...
AB 939.
939, yes, 939. The, the or else, you know, the public, it was ominous sounding, but really, the or else was, if we didn't come into compliance, it was $50,000 a day that the city would be fined for noncompliance.
That's what I wanted to say.
And so, you know, so this is, you know, as, as challenging as I think all of this is, you know, the state, and, and look, this last piece of, of thing that we just voted on with the housing and all of that, this is, just follows in a pattern that I find very frustrating, and that's, I think, why I hesitated a bit on that last one, because I, I'd really like to register no votes on these, because there used to be a point in time in the state where we used the carrot, not the stick, right? So, we created incentive programs and things to get people to come into compliance, and a lot of those programs worked incredibly well. I mean, we saw it under Clean Water Act, we saw it under Clean Air Act, and now it's, you know, more of, no longer letting the market and the, and the incentives do the work, but, you know, enforcement through pre-bizantine, you know, or else. And it, it just frustrates me that, you know, and, and, you know, so if we don't do this, then what happens? We're, we're noncompliance with 1383, and the state then levies fines to us, which, you know, does what? It just, you know, hinders our ability to run a city, and it, you know, places our tax dollars into a, you know, a fund to give back to the state, you know, and just, you know, it's a horrible situation to be put in, quite frankly.
And I have to agree with Matt as well, it's, it is very frustrating that the state is constantly, we're under their foot, I mean, their boot. I mean, that's really what it is. Everything we're doing, I feel like we, we have to do, we don't, we are mandated almost to do, but it doesn't mean I have to like it, so.
And that's the erosion of local control that we keep talking about.
Unbelievable.
So, okay, any other comments? Nothing?
But I will say, though, just to, you know, pat Temecula on the back, we weren't, not just were we the first city to jump on board with this program years ago, before any mandates were on, but weren't we also the first city that actually did the recycling program back in the day?
I think, I think you're right, Mayor Protem, that CRNR would tell you that Temecula was maybe the first three-bin...
We were.
...community that sort of rolled that out.
In the state.
Yeah. I think so.
I think so. We were, right? So, I mean, so that's why I say it's a little frustrating, because Temecula has always kind of been out in front of a lot of these issues, and, you know, and we've, I mean, that's always been our ethic, and so, we've done it, we've gotten our community to come on board, and we've, we've kept it as a positive messaging, not, you know, a stick. And so, it, it's a little frustrating to see this happen.
So, the good news is, we just keep doing what we've been doing pretty much all along. Okay. All right, so, I need a motion on this one.
I'll move the item. I'll need to read the title.
Want to go ahead, Peter?
This is an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Temecula amending Article One definitions of Chapter 8.20 of the Temecula Municipal Code and amending Article 14, mandatory organic waste disposal reject, reduction of the Temecula Municipal Code and making a determination of exemption under SEQA Guideline Sections 15061B3 and 15308.
All right, I'll move item nine.
Okay, so, a motion and a second, and, okay, let's go ahead and vote. I have Councilmember Schwenk as the first, who's the second?
Myself.
Okay. And that one is unanimous, thank you very...
Madam Mayor, it is not.
Our mayor's screen isn't working.
Yeah.
Five to one.
Okay. Oh, all right. Okay, three to one.
Three to two.
Three to two. I was going to say, that's not right, three to two, okay. Thank you very much. So, we had no votes by Councilmember Alexander and Stewart, and the others are reflected as being yes votes.
Correct.
Okay, thank you very much, yeah. That one's not working, that one's working. Okay, so, Mr. City Manager, you've got anything for us?
Actually, Madam Mayor, we have one more business item.
We do?
Yes.
Did I skip it? Oh, my goodness, I did turn two pages, I'm so sorry. Introduce ordinance amending the municipal code relating to adjustment of council/district boundaries, this is an important also, to comply with amendments to Election Code Section 21600 to 21609. My apologies, I had two pages stuck together. So, Randy, this one is you.
Yes, and this is also a, more of a technical housekeeping item. Assembly Bill 1276 was signed into law on September 18th, 2020, and became effective on January 1st, 2021. The bill made several technical changes to existing Elections Code Section 21600 with respect to ensuring consistency of redistricting processes and deadlines between general law and charter cities and counties. It also set forth the methodology of adoption by resolution or ordinance. The agenda packet did include the full copy of the legislation, and the proposed ordinance is a housekeeping measure to ensure consistency between our Temecula Municipal Code and the Elections Code changes. And with that, I will go ahead and turn it back to you, Madam Mayor.
Okay, do we have any questions? No? No? Any discussion? None? All right, so, we're introducing the ordinance. Peter, anything, do you need to read it?
Yes, this is an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Temecula amending Section 2.08.028 of the Temecula Municipal Code relating to the adjustment of council/district boundaries pursuant to the requirements of Elections Code Sections 21600 to 21609.
All right, thank you, so, we need a motion and a second.
Move.
Second.
Okay, that one is unanimous, thank you. Mr. City Manager, anything?
Nothing further tonight, Madam Mayor.
Peter?
Yes, Madam Mayor, and members of the City Council in closed session tonight, the council, by unanimous vote, approved the settlement agreements under the proposed national opioid, national prescription opioids litigation, two settlement agreements with distributors and with a one manufacturer of opioids, as well as the, the agreement, allocation agreements with the state. And I will be preparing at your direction a agenda item for the next meeting with a resolution to confirm that approval, which will explain all of the details of the two settlements.
All right, thank you.
And no other action to report from closed session.
Okay, so, matter of protocol, now, Peter will be recommending that we need to go ahead and have consensus on, on the, on the next items for future city council agenda? No, because the city attorney places items on the agenda as in demand.
Right.
Okay, just wanted to make sure that people understood that, and so, we are looking at adjournment, and as I stated before, Temecula lost a very well-respected and beloved resident in, in the form of, as far as our Ventners are concerned, and the residents of Temecula, so, we would like to adjourn this meeting in the memory of Joe Hart from Hart Wineries. So, did we have something in that one? You did?
No, it's going to be...
So, Matt?
There was no opportunity for items for future agendas?
No, if the members of the City Council had something for a future agenda, this would be the time to...
Oh, okay, I'm sorry.
I do.
Okay. City, city attorneys go on automatically, but, okay, so you go ahead.
I'm not, I'm not special like our city attorney.
I'm sorry.
Actually, I think this one, it, really, really brief, and, and it was part of my thinking on, on reading tonight's agenda and some of the materials, you know, a lot of what we get handed to us are state mandates that we, we don't have a whole lot of choice in, in voting on. You know, Mr. City Manager and Mr. City Attorney, I'd like to see, and, and, you know, with the consent of, of council, maybe we can put this on a future agenda to discuss putting it on the agenda, but, but, but the idea that, you know, what are our options as a city if we start to, you know, finally say, look, you know, enough is enough? And at what point do we reach that sort of threshold where, you know, we start to, you know, push back on some of, some of these items? We do know that the, you know, a lot of these ordinance, a lot of these bills have bits in them that, you know, place fines against cities for not being in compliance and so forth, so those are pretty standard, but certainly, in our relationship with the League of Cities and others, there's a lot of cities out there that are, you know, running up against the same thing, and collectively, 457, 52 cities? Eighty-two, 482, thank you, 482 cities statewide. I know we're not the only ones that are struggling with this, and so, while we all like to register our no votes on some of these items, you know, functionally, it's, it's difficult for us, because all it does is cost taxpayer dollars unnecessarily, but then the alternative is putting an ordinance that we don't fundamentally agree with either. So, I'm wondering if we could maybe put that on a future, you know, item for discussion on an agenda, and maybe, maybe work a little bit more aggressively in that space, because I feel like, you know, I've, I've kind of reached a threshold here.
Yeah, I think we have a lot, several of us have.
I don't think we need to discuss that, I think just put it on the...
Yeah. Yeah, all right, so...
So, we actually have our legislative platform that is coming back every year. It comes back to you the first meeting in January, so would you like, that's probably the ideal time, because you are literally approving your legislative platform.
Yes, and can we, can we then maybe have as part of that a staff report and sort of legal sort of interpretation of what, what our options are and how to navigate that space a little bit better? Because unfortunately, I don't think we have those tools at our disposal readily. And maybe, maybe there aren't any, but, you know, certainly would be nice to explore this a little bit more deeply.
Okay.
Thank you.
So are we clear about what this is, Mr. City Manager?
We, we got it.
Got it?
It'll, it'll come back in January with legal and legislative options as it relates to state man, state mandates.
Okay, and so we need a motion and a second to that effect, do we not?
No.
Okay, so, all right. Then, now we can move on to the adjournment in the name of Joe Hart, who was the owner, founder of Hart Wineries, and he will be missed, and we extend our condolences to his family. So I call this meeting adjourned.